About on time. Okay, folks, we're recording and we're on. Thank you everyone for being here. I see we have participants that join in through the registration link. Welcome and thank you for being here. This debate, this forum, actually it is not a debate, it's a forum. It's being hosted by Thrive Hood River. You may know us as a nonprofit and Watchdog Group with a knack for farmland protection, forests, wild places, and promoting livability in Hutterford County. That is its urban and rural communities. I'm the new executive director, Nico Salter. But you may have interacted with Thrive through a longtime leader Heather Stanton or my wonderful colleague Jackie Kramer, who's right here with us. We are a nonpartisan group. This means that we don't support candidates. We don't get involved in elections. So you might wonder why we're hosting this. The reason is that we serve Hutterford County and we wanted to facilitate more information for voters. As we vote for the May 17 election, we are hoping that this forum might help voters fill out their ballots, which should have arrived your house already, or you should be getting this week. A disclaimer, we invited all five candidates. We're very lucky to have three today. The three we have are Jennifer Ure, as you can see, Kathleen Sanders and Letty Valle Moretti. The last thing I would say before we hop on and ask questions is that, as you may know, Hutterford County is a home rule county. That means that the county has a lot of power and flexibility in how administers its services. It's one of very few counties in Oregon to be a home rule county. One of the things it does is administer elections. And if that wasn't enough, as we come out of this pandemic, you may have noticed that the body of government that was implementing and administering a lot of the state's public health policies was the county. So these are very important seats. In other words, I would say to our candidates, our fate is in your hands. So thank you for being here with us today. The way this forum will go is as follows. I will open up by asking candidates to make an opening statement that is, what keeps you up at night? What are your priorities? What is your background? Why do you think your experience will help you? That kind of thing. And then we will move on to six policy questions. We will allot two minutes each for these. So that is three minutes for the opening statement and then two minutes each for the six policy questions. I will let you know via chat if you're kind of overflowing in time, taking too much time. I'll give you a a time reminder and then hopefully we'll have time for a Q and A. So if you're in this registration, if you got into a registration and you're in the audience, please feel free to use the Q and A. The way I will sift through them is just by looking at which one is asked with the most frequency and then hopefully I'll get the most frequent questions and you'll ask them candidates. So with that said, thank you for being here. I will start with Kathleen Sanders. Kathleen, thank you for being here. Please give us your opening statement. Feel free to describe your district, who you'd be representing, your background, what your priorities are and all that good stuff.
All right. Well, thank you, Nico, so much for inviting me to this forum, actually. So everyone, my name is Kathleen Sanders. I am a pharmacist here in Hutterford County, have done that for over 25 years in the gorge area. I am a fifth generation member of the county. My mom's family pioneered here on the east side, putting in orchards and actually the first irrigated orchard in Hutterford County. And then my father's family, they came out for the lumber industry and then ended up in farming and then in grocery small business. So my upbringing is very broad. I have a lot of perspective to the mid, you know, the city, the mid valley and the upper valley. And then my husband and I, you know, I've worked for big corporations, being a pharmacist. So I have that perspective. I have worked part-time in the hospitals to cover shifts for the local pharmacist that was working there. And then my husband and I own small businesses. So a lot of scope as far as business and, you know, been on both sides of either receiving a paycheck or, you know, writing the paycheck. So we, I have that, you know, background of business, both small and large. But, um, you know, I really want to represent also as a mom, the lifestyle of the west side. That's what I, I come from is the west side district. So my kids went to west side school to Hutterford Middle School. We transitioned to Horizon, you know, Hutterford County has a lot of options for schooling and and, uh, you know, so that's, that's what I'm here to represent is to the voices of the west side and how we live, you know, work and play here in Hutterford County.
Thank you very much. Jennifer, please.
Well, I want to start by thanking you for putting this on. I, I'm, I'm very glad that you are giving the voters a chance to see their candidates in person, as in person as we can be by Zoom. So my name is Jennifer Ure. I am a an orchardist. I have my own and manage an orchard in the upper valley. And I work about, I work probably more in Spanish than English. And while I do speak Spanish, I think more importantly, I can listen in Spanish. I also belong to a large agricultural co-op because I do believe in working with other people to solve problems. And the co-op has a similar size and scope as the county. It's one of the largest marketing, peer marketing co-ops in the United States. And so the I'm on the board of directors. I've been on the board of directors for 15 years. I'm currently the chair and being the chair has given me the the experience of leading meetings, keeping them happening on time, making sure everyone participates, facilitating productive discussions, et cetera. So let's see, what else did you want to know about me was, how long did I have here? Wasn't really sure.
You have, you have about, you have a good amount of time left. I think your top priorities, policy priorities, Jennifer, if.
Okay. Do you want me to, are we supposed, I wasn't sure about the, would you like us to talk about our priorities first or just a little explanation of ourselves?
You know, I think if you can, if you can weave them in, that'd be great. Sort of what are your priorities are and how you think your experience might help you.
Okay. Okay. All right. So obviously, one of the main priorities for our county is keeping the lights on. And so I think our job number one is clearly to have adequate funding in the county. We have, four years ago, we were in a tough spot. We passed the public safety levy. And with that, we have enough money to fund the sheriff's department through wealth for five years. And we also have money that came as a result of COVID. So those two amounts of money are going to help the county get through the next few years, but in two or three years, we're going to be back in the same position we were in previously, unless we do some really serious planning now to put ourselves in a better position by the time that happens. And it's really tricky. If it were easy, it would, somebody would have fixed it by now, but Oregon is a difficult place to, to fund counties. It's, it's not a completely, it's not completely the responsibility. It's not the fault just of the county that we're in this position. But we have to do what we can within our own constraints. We, I, I would say that my second priority is affordable housing. I think everybody in the county realizes what a problem we have with affordable housing. 20 years ago, I was on the Hope Board, which was Housing for People. And it's a non, it was a nonprofit put together back before affordable housing was in the crisis that it is now. But at that time, a group of people got together and built, bought refurbished and organized almost all of what is now Hood Rivers Affordable Rental Housing, which is now administered by the Mid Columbia Housing Authority. And so I've been through that process.
We're coming at three minutes, but I do have a, I do have a question coming up on housing. So is it okay if you can save that up for the question?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
Perfect.
I thought I was supposed to wait with those three anyway.
Thank you. You bet. Okay, Letty, please go ahead.
Sure. Hola buenas tardes. Thank you so much for having us and for organizing this. And this is the first time I get to e-meet you Kathleen, but hopefully soon we'll get to shake hands and just so happy to see another woman putting herself out there to try to get involved and support our county. And so again, I'm Letty Valle Moretti. I am running for Hutterford County Commission District One, and I am running to continue paying it forward. A lot of my work, as you can see, and dedicated my career and volunteer time to build partnerships across multiple sectors like public transportation, housing, safe routes to school, and just continue to bring organizations together to improve the health and wellbeing of everyone in our county. An example of where I've served is the CAT Public Transportation Board for over seven years. And as a CAT Board member, it's been a long run, but we were prioritizing fixed routes to help support more ridership. And, um, you know, something that I can bring that hasn't been included in county leadership is that I bring the Latino voice and that perspective. Growing up as an orchard kid, I feel like I grew up in two different worlds and many of you have maybe heard that I feel like, you know, I wore one type of shoes as I was working and playing and crossing through the orchard. And then when I got to school, I'd wear a different pair of shoes, but I'm here to try to make sure that the county can serve all our residents, no matter what shoes you wear.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, the second question we have is probably the most frequent one we've received on the registration link. It's the perennial question of how can the county improve its financial situation? And what are the greatest budget problems you see? I think I recall reading in the Hood River News some time ago that the county was having trouble just fixing the roof over its head. So it wouldn't leak in the building. So if that wasn't illustrative enough, that goes to show how important this question is. So I will start this time with Jennifer. Jennifer, go ahead.
And the question is, what is the most?
Budget. What are some specific steps you recommend to the county to improve its financial situation? And what are the greatest budget problems you see?
I think, as I started to say earlier, if it were easy, it would be solved. The complicated reasons why we have a hard time funding our county are, I think I already explained, we have to solve these problems right now before they become a crisis again in a few years. So obviously it will have to come with more funding, perhaps from the federal government, perhaps from other taxes. That's been difficult. The restaurant tax did not go over well. And so it's hard to know where that money will come from. I think there are some innovative ideas out there. One of them might be carbon sequestration dollars in the forests. And I don't know a whole lot about that, but I do know that that's one idea that's been floated. As far as the most important budget crisis, I know we have deferred maintenance. I know we have deferred maintenances on roads, but people are really the heart of any organization. And I think one of our budget issues is that we have to do our best to adequately compensate our county employees. It's very difficult for people to afford to live in Hood River and the county is having that same problem as every other business in Hood River. And so in order to appreciate and compensate our employees, we, we have to figure out how in our budget that's going to happen because the people are what make, make our county work.
Thank you very much. Letty, please.
Yeah, thank you. I have been learning a lot about the county budget. And as y'all know, it's complicated. And in these last couple of years, we have the ARPA funds, some COVID relief funds that make our budget look different than other years. So we understand that that's a one-time allocation of 4.5 million, but even when you include that money, you know, I'm looking at a pie chart about 28, about 30% of our funds are here to support the sheriff, patrol, jail and probation. That's the largest chunk of our budget now. So I'm interested just to see as a county and our responsibility to serving the public in that way. If we look at all the things that we're doing, we're doing, you know, the district attorney, justice court, the health department, veteran service, community development, forestry, parks and buildings, IT records and assessment, admin, budget and finance, transfers, the COVID recovery. I think we as a group need to take a look at what really needs to fall on the county? And what are other priorities that can be supported by our partnerships like other health departments and try to collaborate there to see? Make sure that we're not duplicating the services, but working together to streamline those services and maximize everyone's efforts. I definitely, I've been attending the budget meeting, the second budget meeting just concluded to try to understand where the priorities are of the current county commissioners and figure out, you know, I talked a little bit about modernization. How can we invest in programs that take away the time that staff have to be maybe face-to-face with people to help them with, with building permits? How can we streamline that online so it can be done with clicks instead of requiring for, for staff to be there and hold, you know, hold that time with people. So modernizing, I think it's, it's going to be a much longer conversation, but I'm excited about taking this on to have a sustainable and healthy budget. Thank you.
Thank you. And just before I move on to Kathleen, you can all see my time warnings in the chat.
Yeah, thank you. They're helpful.
Bye. Okay. I hate to interrupt you. Kathleen, please.
Yeah, thank you so much. So priorities as a board commissioner with, with the budget, I mean, for me, it's, it's really coming down to fiscal responsibility. I have reviewed the budget, both, both previous and the one that is being proposed. And for me, as a county resident, I've, I've always had questions like where's the money going? My biggest experience really is with the, the building. My husband has a construction company. I, I help run that. So it's often me that goes into the planning and building department that deals with, you know, what are the fees? What are the parameters? What are we doing? What are we dealing with? And, you know, one of the things that's involved here is, are these extra taxes, you know, where are they going? How are they being used? And for me, I, I'm against proposing any new taxes. Hood River County went ahead and approved, you know, an increase in just the last few years. And the reason we approved it is because our commissioners put together the ideas, you know, the budget as to what, what this should cost. They proposed it to the, the valley and, and we approved it. So I don't feel that we need to be asking for anymore. What I think we need to be doing is looking at the core services that the county residents need to have. And for me, one of the biggest things is police and emergency services. We, we've needed to hire another deputy for a couple of years. For me, that, that is a priority. People on the west side want to feel safe in their homes. There have been recent, you know, an increase in crime in Hood River. We've had a lot of break-ins. I actually had one of our contractors was eating lunch at a local restaurant and had his van stolen while he was, while it was just parked in the parking lot. So I also have a business out in the valley where it's very imperative that we have security services going on, police patrol. And it's not happening. There are hours in the middle of the night where there is, there is no sheriff, you know, on patrol. So for me, this is a very important issue. We need to make sure that our police and emergency services are funded well. And then regarding the ARPA funds. Yeah.
No, I'm sorry, we're over. But I, I, I appreciate you all laying your priorities for the budgets and your budget philosophy. I'm sure there's another question, Kathleen, where we might be able to weave the this question in. Okay. So I guess we're going to start with Letty now. Third question is as follows. What are some steps you would take to help our farmers and the economic viability of agriculture in the Hood River area?
Yeah, thank you. That's a great question. And, you know, my family, of course, still works on the orchard. And I'm very passionate about supporting our farm workers. They feel like there's a lot of pride in, in the pears that we grow. And I think workforce housing is a start to help support our farm workers have a place to live while they're tending to the orchards and this year-round work. I think continuing safety and making sure that we are taking care of our farm workers who, you know, it's difficult to, to have enough of that workforce. There's a lot of contracts to bring in H2A workers and that brings up a lot of safety concerns because this might not be, you know, the trade that they know so well. So I think there, there are tax reimbursements when there's workforce development at the orchard. I feel like continuing to partner with other organizations. And I talked about like apprenticeship programs. So depending on if people want to stay within that route, at what different levels can we support them to be apprentices? Either if it's forklifting, if it's running your own orchard, it's working with their growers. And also if people are interested in moving into another line of work that helps support local agriculture, how do we support them through apprenticeship programs? I'm finding that there's a lot of money out there. And if we can help support grant writers and streamline this economic development to continue to support our agriculture, I think we can tap into those resources and continue to provide that workforce development within the packing houses and in orchards. Was there another part to that question? Did I get it?
Another part to that question.
Thank you.
Anything, anything that may, that you think may help the viability of farms? I guess the only thing I would say is feel free to weave in any context. A lot of bills have been passed this year regarding agriculture, like the overtime bill. So that's what I would say. Letty, are you good?
Yeah, yeah, I think the overtime, I'm really happy that the overtime bill passed. And I think, you know, there was a lot of discussion about whether we could afford this. And I think when you start doing the math and how much our farm workers are getting paid $15 an hour and they're working about 51 hours each week. So that's 11 hours of overtime. And you do the math that adds up to another 35,000 for each employee a year. And I think that's much less than trying to bring in someone else and provide more housing for them. So I think we'll get to see that it's going to ultimately help all of us. And the Latino farm workers are investing in our community here. So the ones that are going to go shopping here and go, and go, you know, to Walmart and our, and our, all of our local stores. So that money does get to be invested back into our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, Kathleen.
All right. Thank you. You know, actually like, like Jennifer and Letty, I also grew up in the orchard and adjacent to the orchard. My, my grandfather had an orchard. I can remember I was not allowed in the big packing house because that's where the grownups went. But I do remember when Diamond Fruit Packing House was across the street from the Odell store, I would watch, you know, those white boxes go through on the conveyor belt. And farming is very important to me. I had a quick discussion with a farmer friend of mine and asked him, you know, what are the things that the commissioner can bring to the table to make agriculture easier? And like Letty, it, a lot of it is the housing. I, I know that, you know, unfortunately, the housing in the farmer, in the farms used to be very minimal. My, my, my dad's family actually had that kind of a lifestyle. And I can, you know, listen to my grandmother saying, yeah, we used to, she used to sweep a dirt floor, but I think times have changed. We've become more sensitive to what we need to provide as employers. And certainly we have a great group of farm owners in this valley. So I think an easier path to developing the right kind of housing, you know, in each orchard is something that the county can provide. And this is a provision that I think that we can offer by exception to the rule. If we were to have a farmer come in and say, hey, you know what, I've, you know, I want to commission this section of my, my orchard, you know, it's old orchard, or maybe it's, you know, a section of land that would be more suitable for housing than farming. And I'd like to put in, you know, residents there for my workers. I think that that's an area that the county can take a look at, you know, giving that permission and making it easier for the farmer. The other thing I have to say is I think that there's too much oversight. I think that the farmers know what they're doing. And Jennifer, I'm sure you can speak to this. But there's a lot of hands in, in the mixing bowl and I don't think that there need to be so many. So I think we need to leave it up to the experts of the industry. And when they come to us, we can offer, you know, get a coalition together, talk about the issues and then find solutions together. So that would, that would be my take for helping the ag industry here in Hood River.
Thank you, Kathleen. Okay, Jennifer, I'm sure you have a few things to say here.
Well, first of all, I would say that what Letty and Kath, well, what Letty said about all of the workers, the farm workers in the valley, the farm workers are absolutely key to the fruit industry in this valley. And they do need to be, they need to be appreciated. The farmers very much appreciate them. I believe that, and this isn't something the county can solve, but I believe that all of us in America should appreciate them more. We spend less on food in this country than on any, in any other developed country. We spent 8% of our, of our money, of our disposable income on food on average. In Europe, it's 20%. And so it's, it's my feeling that there would be that, that farm work is valuable. And I wish that could change. That's not something the county can change, but it is something that we all have to live with. And we're competing for food from countries that definitely do not have any of the protections that we're talking about in this country. And when our food becomes more expensive, mostly what we do is import food from countries that have no protections. And so that's a frustration to me because the more we try and solve the problem in this country, in some ways, the worse we make it. And that's not anybody's fault. I mean, I'm not pointing fingers. We still have to try working for solutions. I'm just saying that it's a frustrating position to be in. As far as being a farmer, I think what we need is the ability to farm. And so the protection of our agricultural land is the most important thing that the county can do. We need to be able to farm. We have right to farm, to farm rules and it's, it's difficult sometimes. I mean, I turn on noisy fans. I've turned on my noisy fans more this year than I have in many years. And I understand that some people are frustrated by that. But that's how we keep our crops from freezing. And it's a much better solution than heating them by burning fossil fuels. So I think it's worth pointing out that we have about 15,000 acres of, of fruit trees in this valley. It probably takes about 250 of them to feed Oregon, the demand for pears in Oregon. So the other balance, the 13,750 or whatever the number is, goes outside. That's an export out of Hutterford County that goes all over the world. It goes all over the United States and all over the world. That's the backbone of our business. The commercial farms and the packing houses in Odell are the backbone of this business. And like every other business in Hutterford County, we need affordable housing. And so what we do for affordable.
Yeah, a little bit over. No, no, it's all right. I have been, some of you had time left in the first question. So I had been letting some of you go a little bit over, but now we're all strained out. So I will be cutting up.
We're all caught up.
Yeah. So thank you. Thank you for those very substantive answers and for being specific, even though this is a complex issue with a lot of dynamics and a lot of priorities to be reconciled. So this fourth question is quite related. It involves recreation and tourism and agriculture. The question goes as follows. In the past decade, recreation and tourism have become an increasingly important part of the county's economy. How should the county balance these economic changes while maintaining a strong agricultural economic background? I believe we started with Letty last time, so we can go ahead and start with Kathleen. Go ahead, Kathleen.
All right. I actually love this question because I really have seen the transition of, you know, logging and farming to tourism and windsurfing, sailing and biking and hiking, all that stuff. So I, I really do think that the coordination of the city of Hood River, the county and Chamber of Commerce have brought together and maintained the events that exemplify or, you know, honor the fruit industry. We have the Blossom Festival. We have the Fruit Loop. We have, you know, Harvest Festival and then cider. We don't want to forget the wine industry because that really is advancing and continuing to grow here in Hood River. But, you know, we have wine and cider events. And I think that these are things that we can continue to promote, to bring tourism in. We can, you know, allow the people that are coming here for all of the extra recreational activities to take part in the wonderful, you know, landscape and agriculture of our county. I know that we also want to support economically, like Jennifer was saying, the packing houses, you know, Diamond and Duckall have and other, you know, the private packing houses too of the orchard. You know, Diamond and Duckwell have, and, and other, you know, the private packing houses too, of the orchardists that have grown enough to have their own packing houses. We should be supporting them as well. You know, what I would actually think would be really cool is to combine, again, you know, we used to do these things back in the day. But combine the events where it's, you know, sailing and, you know, a beer fest or a cider fest that goes along with it. Combining these things that bring people to the valley and also spend money in the valley, you know, because that is ultimately what is going to keep our economy growing here in tourism.
All right, Jennifer, go ahead.
Well, I think one of the, one of the reasons that people do come to Hood River is because it's beautiful and they really do enjoy looking at the orchards. And so I think the fact that we have orchards here for them to ride their bikes past and basically sometimes just to drive past, I think that is actually part of the, part of the draw of coming as tourists. I had someone recently tell me how carefully he parsed the difference between recreation and tourism. As in recreation is something that an awful lot of people have moved here for. They live here in order to do recreation. They live here because they can go mountain biking. Tourism, people that come in to do what they do for the weekend or the, or the week. To him, that was a difference. And I hadn't, I hadn't, I hadn't maybe thought of it quite that way before. So I think we need to think about which is tourism and which is recreation and the, the recreation that people do who live here. I mean, I, I think they like to ride their bikes around and, and look at the county and use the, use the county forests to mountain bike on and obviously use the river. So I think that as long as we continue to have farms and support our farms, that, that will be a strong part of our, of our county that, but the farms have to be viable on their own. And we have challenges that are beyond the, the scope of, of what can be done in the county. But the, what the county can do is continue to protect our land. Thank you.
Thank you. What are yours?
Yeah, thank you. With tourism and recreation, I think about the balance between public safety and protecting these beautiful natural resources that we have. And I, I do echo what Jennifer was saying about the difference between recreation and tourism. And I think in, in this case, if we're thoughtful about the way that we market the recreation opportunities and tourist opportunities in Hood River, making sure that they're bilingual or multilingual, making sure that we can convey the message to anybody who comes to visit our trails that helping them connect with, with our home so that they're more thoughtful when they're using it, so that they aren't littering, so that they're being safe when they're accessing these places. My father's also a volunteer firefighter. And he's been called out plenty of times to deal with car accidents on Highway thirty-five and all the congestion that we see at Tamaula Falls. They can be pretty scary. So I think in, in those cases, if like Congressman Bluman Hour's proposal is really gonna happen, we need to also ask for support from the state and federal level to, to amp up those resources to be able to respond. And to educate everyone who lives here and have everyone feel freely, feel like they can be a part in being the stewards and helping model how we take care of our, our resources here in Hood River County. I believe tourism, our tourism dollars are only about five to ten percent of, of the income that we make here in the county. So it's not a lot, although people think it is. But, you know, Post Canyon now has a parking permit fee. And so how do we tap into those kinds of ideas where people are paying to make sure that we can maintain those parks and bike paths and what we're known for? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so the fifth question is probably the second greatest request we got on the registration link. It involves housing, of course, the housing shortage. It goes like this. Addressing Hood River's housing affordability problem has been a goal of the county commission for many years. Do you think the county has a role to play in housing? And if so, please explain your ideas. I think this time we are starting with Kathleen.
Okay, this one is my favorite topic because this is my, my strong point in my background. So I, I do think that the county has a role in figuring out the housing issue. However, it is not in increasing fees or providing a fund that goes to affordable housing because from what I've seen over the years, this fund has gone untouched. Right now, it's got over a million dollars. It's called the construction excise tax. And that is what a fund. There's a fee when you go in to put in a building permit for a new house or new construction. You, you pay a fee that goes theoretically or hypothetically towards affordable housing. Well, I can tell you as the owner of a, a building company that if I get charged a fee, it goes on to the person that's buying the house. I, I don't eat that fee as the construction person. This gets passed on. So inherently, this is an oxymoron. It, it goes directly to the person that's buying the house and does not make it more affordable. So for me, this is, this is something that I want to see some changes. My perspective is that, and I know the forum that I'm speaking to, but I, I do think that there are properties throughout the valley that could be opened up for housing development. There are very, you know, limited spaces, but I think that we can take a look at the zoning of certain properties that are not suitable for farming, even though they are zoned for farming. And I, I also want to take a look at what's going on in Odell and then futuristically in Parkdale. It's been like eight years that Odell has been on the docket. Like, for goodness sakes, what is taking so long to figure out where we can expand housing in Odell? That is where I grew up. I mean, there are properties there that I've seen that are zoned, exclusive farm use. They really have never been farmed productively. And I think that they could be switched over to either light industrial to build our economy or put in for, you know, a small housing unit where we can make Odell a bedroom community because there is good industry out there. And there should be places for people to live that are affordable in either the mid-valley or the upper-valley while still preserving the forest and, you know, the agricultural spaces. So for me, yeah, I want to take a good look at that.
Thank you. And just so you know, we're very neutral. So even when we talk about building on farmland, I will not move you. I can promise that.
That's awesome.
Letty, go ahead.
Sure, thank you. Yes, attainable, affordable housing, the hot topic and something that we've been working on for many years here in Hood River County. So I also serve on the Hood River County Planning Commission and we recognize the importance of thoughtful land use and how that impacts housing costs. Currently, the, the planning commission is really only meeting when there's appeals. So I think there is an opportunity to be proactive and start looking at how do we actually set boundaries around Odell and Parkdale so that we can take a look at thoughtful planning and making sure that we're providing a sense of community when we are providing housing. And housing isn't everything, right? So we also want to have walkable, bikeable neighborhoods, public transportation so that people can access other resources once they have a home to live in. And I definitely want to take a look at permitting and how we can expedite that. So construction isn't delayed, which those delays will increase the cost because we know timber is very expensive right now and so is labor. But we need a comprehensive zoning plan to allow, allow for multifamily and mixed-use development while we're protecting those ag lands and, and wild spaces. So how can we get creative about where we're building homes? And we've got a shopping center maybe on the first floor and housing up at the top. But we do need to invest in stable and safe housing. I think as a county, they're doing a great job partnering with the city for the Rand Road development. I think to continue to partner as well with the navigation center in the Dow. So there's other resources that can, you know, there are so many things that affect our housing shortages and having people be in a place where they can afford to pay their rent. But I do, I do, I'm really excited to get past the campaigning piece and actually start working on these issues. Thank you.
Okay, Jennifer, I believe if anyone left.
You know, I have to echo what Letty said. I'm enthusiastic about instead of campaigning, get to, to work on, on some of these things. I was on the planning commission the last time we went through talking about expanding, establishing a boundary around the unincorporated community of Odell. And now we've got both of those on the docket, Odell and Parkdale, establishing those. One of the hangups was that they had to improve the infrastructure first, and both of them have done work on their water treatment plants. And so both, both communities are now in a position to have these boundaries established. And when they are, we will be able to zone for more housing. And so I would think that the, but I think we're talking about two kinds of affordable housing. Affordable housing perhaps that is subsidized and, and helped by the county. And as I said before, I was on the hope board years ago before, this was on everybody's radar. And the process of finding land, finding partners, accessing grants, deciding who you're going to serve. Will they be single-family homes? Will they be zero to thirty percent, thirty to sixty percent median? There's, there's all sorts of decisions to be made. So there's a lot of details in actually getting, getting to building affordable housing, which is what the county's doing with, well, the city's doing on Rand Road. And it's complicated. So, so that is something that I'm familiar with. And then there's just whether or not there's going to be more places, as Letty was talking about, that are zoned for denser housing. And of course, that's another way we can get at this. So I do think the county has a, has a place absolutely in this. And I look forward to working on it.
Thank everyone. Okay, so we've hit tourism, we've hit ag, and we've hit money problems. So with that in mind, we'll dovetail into this question. What is your opinion or opinion on the Blumenauer proposal to expand the Mountain Hood National Forest Recreation Area by more than three hundred and fifty thousand acres? Do you think it will have a negative impact on the Hood River County timber revenues? Letty, we'll start with you now.
Very, thank you. You know, learning about the timber revenue in Hood River County, I believe it's about fifteen percent of where our money comes from. And I understand that it's paid out to the county on an average over ten years. So whether there's a dip in timber or not, we're still looking about the same amounts each year so that we can know what to expect. I, so I'm not exactly sure how it's gonna affect the timber, the timber sales. And that way, I think, again, we just need to bring, make sure that we're bringing in public safety, making sure that we're connecting with all of our small businesses and anybody who serves the thirty-five, eighty-four corridors to ensure that we're thoughtful in the way that we are promoting, if this does pass, accessing those resources. So we know that Tamaula is a super popular. And when there's a lot of cars there, how do you make sure that we're letting people know, hey, there's another hike twenty, ten miles up the road and kind of just making sure that we're not overpopulating the, the areas that we have? I feel like it is an opportunity for economic development and for helping create jobs for people to help protect the trails and be out there and caring for them. I know when I was working at the next store, you know, the youth would be, get hired in the summer to go clean up trails. And so how do we create that as an opportunity for people to get more involved in, in forestry and supporting the county in, in other ways outside of, you know, just the minimum that we have right now for public safety?
All right, thank you. Kathleen.
Absolutely. This one excited me. I, I like to be in the outdoors, although you will like, not likely find me ever on a mountain bike because I'm not good on a bicycle. But hiking is something I do enjoy, getting out on the trails. And this, this does look to me like a very good plan. And I want to commend the current commission for putting a little hands up to, to the legislators to say, hey, we need a little more definition as to what this means, what you're going to provide for us if we open this up, and how is Hood River County going to benefit from it? Because one of the concerns I do have is the wildfire mitigation, the forest management. I'm all about renewing the resource. So, you know, cutting and planting is something I've grown up with, and I think it's a good plan. I think that Oregon is kind of, and California too, we've, we stepped back in the forest management. And I think that this is a way that we can incorporate this back into better land management in the forest. One of my other concerns is litter and waste cleanup. Although these recreationists tend to be very good volunteers and want to make the place beautiful, there are people that go out there and, you know, maybe inadvertently, they leave, you know, a plastic bottle or, you know, waste around. So that's a concern. How are we going to fund, you know, waste management with that? And then the other thing that I have noticed in reading this plan is what, what is our responsibility to tribal properties and tribal responsibilities? So I think that that also needs to have a little bit of a hands up from the county to say, you know, what are our responsibilities here? What are we gonna do with the native people? Because they are a big impact for us. You know, Cascade Locks is part of Hood River County. And I've, I've grown up playing basketball against, you know, a lot of the kids that grew up in Cascade Locks are playing football. You know, my kids played football against them. And we, you know, they sometimes get forgotten because they're twenty miles down the road. But it is something that we need to be mindful of. And that's, I don't think it's going to affect the forestry so much, the money that comes in, because I think that we are already pushing back on that to get a better definition of what this plan is going to look like for Hood River County.
Yes, we definitely can't forget about the Dows. And a lot of us recent HRVHS grads, if you don't fix a housing shortage, we're all gonna be moving to the Dows. So Jennifer, go ahead.
Yeah, that housing shortage, the young people who grow up here and want to raise their families here. I mean, there's so many reasons that we need to fix the housing problem. I actually went to the, to Cascade Locks to introduce myself the other night. And it was very interesting what I learned from the Cascade Lock City Council and what they're, what they're concerned with. As far as Blumenauer's proposal, I think our mountain is being loved to death. People are gonna come here regardless. And I think part of this proposal is to somehow organize some of that visitation and whether or not it comes with funding, I think is of great interest to the county. I think that's one of the things the county's been pushing back on. So the details are that there's three hundred and fifty thousand acres. The details do not include any money coming to Hood River that I'm aware of that would help to pay for the search and rescue and safety and extra, extra public safety police force. So I think those are all considerations. But we can't, we have to, we have to acknowledge that more and more people are using our forests. As far as affecting the county forests, since these are national forests, they shouldn't directly affect the county timber revenue since it's a different, since they're different acres. However, the wildfire issue could affect the county if there were to be a wildfire and especially if it were more difficult to fight because it was against an, an area where we couldn't fight. It might, that might have an impact on the county. So if there were a huge wildfire, yes, it could.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And that was everyone. Okay, the last question we have in the prescribed questions that I shared with you goes as follows. It's about the comp plan. So I think you've made leading mention to the form. Hood River County's comprehensive plan is the guiding document for county policy. How familiar are you with this plan? And what are the most important goals from this plan to you as a candidate? Jennifer, I think we can start with you on this one.
I don't have it memorized. I have it on my computer rather than having it memorized. Actually, everything about it is important. I think the fact that we have one is important. The fact that we are organized, the fact that we have our priorities straight, that we agreed on them forty, fifty years ago and that we've been living that way. As a, as a county commissioner who was slated with my, my responsibility as a county, I'm sorry, as a planning commissioner, my responsibility is to make decisions that are in line with the county, with the state ordinances that represent what, what I hear in the hearing from both sides. And to me, the fact that we have that framework is what matters. I know as a planning commissioner that while every decision that while every decision that came before us, every appeal and every every policy that we debated, while they all were important and each was important to me, the outcome of any single decision never mattered as much to me as the integrity of the system and the fact that we are consistent and fair in, in all of the ordinance that are in the county comp plan. To me, that's what's important. The fact that we have agreed to this overarching framework for our land use in the county is is, it's so different from other states, you know, we were the first state to do this. And so because we have that framework, we can move forward, we'll be able to plan for growth, we will be able to agree on what we're going to do in Odell and Parkdale. We will be able to find land for affordable housing. And we will have a discussion about it because that's how we roll. So and I think citizen involvement is one of the most important parts. When people appeal things, you know, there's a, there's a certain amount of stress in deciding to, I mean, our, the process includes the, the, the ability to appeal. And when people go out of their way to weigh in on something like that publicly, you know, there's a certain amount of, of stress in that perhaps you are objecting to something that maybe your neighbor is doing. And yet, we are encouraged to be participants in this. And so I think we need to be mindful of of encouraging people to, to participate and to be sure that they're comfortable doing so.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. Okay, Letty.
Yeah, thank you. I'm thumbing through my printed copy of the report. And again, I'm, I'm really happy that we have this. There's fourteen goals on here with goal number one is citizen involvement. And I think all residents, if they can feel like they have input and a say and, and ultimately provide buy-in in these goals to move them forward. I think that is something that I'd like to focus on. And the second goal is land use planning that touches on all the things we were just talking about with our ag, with housing, with our forests and recreation. So I, I am looking forward to going through each goal and saying, you know, this can hold us accountable. And we can come back and say to our constituents, you know, whether we've worked on these things or not, or whether we've made any progress or not. And I do like the idea of having this document. So anybody who looks it up can can study it and come and ask questions. I think this is where I've gathered a lot of my questions when I go to county commission meetings or I meet with commissioners. You know, how, how is it that you are following through with citizen involvement? How are you structuring your meetings to make sure that you're gathering input from all of our stakeholders? How are you prioritizing land use planning through the planning department? What are we capable of doing? So I think it's, it's a good guide. And also it allows us to come and check to see what progress we're making so that we can answer people's questions when they come and ask us, what's going on with these, what's happening with these goals? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Letty. Kathleen, you open for us. So I'll let you take the last one and the last.
All right. Thank you so much, Nico. So admittedly, I did a little bit homework on this one. So the comprehensive land use. It hasn't been reviewed since two thousand and eleven. The comparison I'd like to make is I think that Hood River definitely has become, you know, an eclectic area or county of, of Oregon. We, I would say that our most similar county would be Deschutes County because Bend is growing exponentially. The housing prices are very similar. And when you take a look at their land use committees, there are some very strong similarities. They too have not reviewed since two thousand and eleven. So I'm going to take a stab. This is probably more state-led. So I would like to challenge Hood River to take a review of this again. Ten years is a long time. We're, it's actually eleven years since this has been reviewed. Think of how many iPhones you've been through in, in eleven years. We need to take a look at what this comprehensive plan is and, and adjust it to current date and time. But I also think that we need to be coordinating with other counties such as Deschutes County, looking to see what their fee structures are. What are their limitations? What do they do for exceptions? How do they go about some of their land use? And I can really speak to this because I've gone and presented an argument to the county commissioners as a business owner or a land use, you know, petition. And there, the joke is when I walk into the planning commission, it's just like, what is the exception to the rule that I'm going to ask for this time? Because this county is, you know, it was laid out a long time ago and not every piece of property fits, you know, the definition. I have a, you know, a family-owned property that, you know, had several acres and we had to do an exception. But when I look at that piece of property, it, it was farm use. It was very steep though, had some forestry. We couldn't get the fire department to approve a driveway with road access. And it was definitely a petition of, hey, you know, this is what we'd like to do. We'd like to put some houses here, and this is the workaround that we would like to propose. We were successful with that, but I will say that looking at the housing dilemma, I think that more houses essentially could have been put on that five acre parcel without eliminating the, the feel of country for those homeowners. They, they still could have had a half acre parcel or felt like they owned a piece of country out in the valley, and it would have provided a lot more homes. So I think we need to look at an exception.
Thank you, Kathleen. Again, I really appreciate the specificity and the substantive answers to questions that are complex. So with your consent, we have one two questions in the Q and A. I think if you have the time, it'd be good to answer these and then we'll move on and I'll give you a moment to close. Does that sound okay? Does everyone have the time?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So we've had a question here in the chat for a little while from Brian Short. Mr. Short is asking about what is the number one, he says, the number one county economic development priority is Hood River Bridge Replacement. The number five is economic development, the number five economic development priority is the agriculture slash technology slash education front. What are your thoughts on each priority? What's your position on each priority? Jennifer, do you like to start with this?
And the first one was, the first one is the bridge and the second one.
The bridge.
The bridge. I'm supposed to choose one of those?
I would say, I, I think, I think Mr. Short is asking about prioritization. Thoughts on each one of these priorities? But I think we should start with the bridge since it's something we actually have not addressed. We have addressed ag. We have not addressed the bridge. So I would, I invite you to do so.
The bridge, the bridge is mostly a port project. And obviously, the county and the people across the river, all sorts of agencies are involved, and it definitely needs to be replaced. And the county will be involved with that. And I think mostly in, in concert with what the port has has, is doing. And so I, I, we definitely need to replace the bridge. We need to get, yes, that's a top priority. Yes. As far as agriculture and technology, the amount of technology that is currently available to us in agriculture is pretty staggering. Everything that you can do anywhere else can be applied to what we're doing. So the drones, the we, for instance, at our packing house, put in the most, the first all completely automated optical sorting line for pairs in the world. It was engineered in Italy, actually. And so there's a lot of cutting edge technology happening in agriculture. And what, frankly, what agriculture needs is land to grow things on, a market that we can sell things into. And forgot what the third one is going to be. I'm sure there's a third one. But I, I think it's, we, we do need people that understand technology and it is there. It's, I guess it's just amazing to me how much is out there. I, I can't even begin to tell you, everything that's available in every other sector of the economy is already available to us. The part of agriculture that we are learning more about actually now is for most of my lifetime in for instance, in fertilizer, we have talked about soil science in terms of minerals. And we're learning more and more about the interactions in our soil that have more to do with bacteria and live things. And that is an area that we could definitely use, for instance, a soil science person at the experiment station. I'm actually on the board of advisors for McCarrick, the Mid Columbia experiment station. And we've recently hired about four scientists, but we don't have a soil scientist yet. And so that would be a good thing to have.
Thank you, Jennifer. Kathleen, you want to take a stab at this?
I would love to. So if anybody doesn't know, Brian Short is an incredible business owner here in Hood River. He is a good supporter of athletic, you know, student events and also adult events here in the valley. And is very generous in his giving. So one, the bridge, Brian, I think that this is a safety issue, and I think it mostly corresponds to state and federal government rather than the county. This is an interstate bridge. We do have to worry about safety of our own residents, both White Salmon Benjen, you know, Hood River and the area, you know, traveling this bridge, but I think it needs to defer with our input. I am all about the economic input into Hood River County. And the thing that I will bring up, I'll circle back to this, is ARPA. This was called the American Rescue Plan Act. I would like to know what businesses Hood River County rescued with this money. Because what I've seen so far, I don't think too much money's gone out as far as protecting the economic development in our county. What I can see so far is that the budget layout is more for county employees, county projects, and not for the people that live in the county. And so, Brian, I love this question, and I hope to make a move to get some of this funding pushed out into economic development and to great businesses like yours.
Letty, any thoughts? Is it the Brian's question?
Yeah, I think most, you know, Kathleen and Jennifer both covered this. I, I feel like the bridge is definitely a high priority. We need to support our the port and also, you know, advocate at the federal and state level for infrastructure funds. Because we know right now that even if we double the tolls, it's not going to pay for itself. And we need to find other solutions and, you know, putting more costs on everyone who crosses that bridge. And, you know, we have the bridges that connect us. We have, you know, the entire gorge. We share resources, we share workers. And so that definitely is a high priority. And I think the county definitely can partner with the port to find a solution to this. And as far as economic development, yeah, I mean, the science is continuing to improve and there's lots of resources for for technology. I think when I, when I think about growing pears in, in Hood River County, and if we can focus on the pride, I know that some, some people tried bringing in machines to pick blueberries and it wasn't working. But if we can really tie into the pride of, of what it takes to grow pears and pick them and package them and ship them, I think that ultimately will come down to the individuals that are picking pears who are growing them. And we can try to support them so that they're able to continue to support agriculture. So I think both it's a mix of science and, and people.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, everyone. We have one last one, and I think we should do it so we can say that we did all the questions. And then we satisfied. So the last one is about housing. We've already addressed, but there is a line in there about cohousing, cohousing projects, which I don't think anyone has addressed yet. So what are your attitudes towards cohousing projects in Hood River County? Let's say, Letty, would you like to start?
Yeah, does cohousing count when we have our relatives live with us? I think that this is a really great example of how we can have community and support different generations. You know, growing up Latino, it's very common to have your grandmother live at home and the grandkids running around and supporting each other at all different levels. So I'm, I'm all for all the different possibilities that we're going to have to take a look at and include in order to actually make an impact in solving the housing crisis here in the gorge.
Kathleen.
Okay, cohousing it. And forgive me if I don't have this comprehension right, but you know, I think it's in the same line what Letty was speaking about is you know, multiple generations or people on the same property. And I think this is where the ADU comes in, the accessory dwelling unit. And I think that this is something that can provide for extra housing for, you know, the one or two-person lifestyle living. And I think in most places in the county, I'm going to stick my neck out here. I think that this is something that we need to be looking at. Especially on the pieces of property and the county that are zoned, you know, greater than two acres. I have several friends that have big parcels and then they decided later on to put in a garage and over the garage, they put a cute little apartment. And, you know, maybe that is for their child that comes home after college and they don't really want them in their house, but have a still place, you know, for them to live rent-free, but also to bring in for them a small income, you know, say maybe a thousand dollars a month or more to have someone else rent that space, which is more like a studio situation. And if this is the intent of cohousing, I am for that, you know, in the greater valley area. I know that the city is, is really pushing for the ADU on, you know, just get the housing as tight as you can in the city. But, you know, in the, in the county, we need to take a look at, you know, is it the right size lot before we take a look at, at putting those units in?
Thank you very much, Kathleen. Jennifer.
Well, I'm not sure. We all seem to have our own definition of cohousing. I thought cohousing was when a group of people wanted to build homes together, small homes in, in close proximity. Is that correct?
I think so as well. And we don't have a specification, but I think we're talking about developers building projects where we have smaller units within a parcel.
Okay, well.
So if anyone wants to revise their answer, I didn't want to corner anyone. But if anyone wants to revise their answer, send me a little chat message.
Well, I have to say that, like Letty, I grew up next door to my grandmother and had dinner with her every night. And so to me, if cohousing means people either choosing to live together as in, in close proximity in small homes, small efficient homes, or, or families who live together with their extended family, either all of that, I mean, people should have a chance to live in, in whichever, whichever configuration they choose. And if people choose to live in that configuration, I can see a lot of upside to it, especially if, as Letty said, you've got families where you've got younger people interacting with older people. I mean, it's, it's so good for everybody at every age and in every economic situation to be interacting with people with different experiences. I just, the more we can do along those lines, the better.
I would agree. I also grew up with my grandparents. You can speak to that. Okay, well, those are all the questions we have. I will invite you now to give me a closing statement. I don't think we've had an issue with time, so I'm not going to be monitoring the time for the closing statement. I will ask you in the order that you respond to our email. And so the first person to respond to our invitation was Kathleen. So Kathleen, go ahead. Then with Jennifer and then Letty, and then what we done?
All right. Well, Nico, thanks again for putting this format together. It's, it's been a delight to be able to have, you know, meet these two wonderful women that have stuck their neck out just like I have. But I'm excited to run for this position. I had several of my friends and coworkers suggest to me that I should do this based on my life experiences. Again, I am a fifth generation resident of the valley. I have seen the changes, you know, roll through, whether it's you know, logging is out, logging is back in, fruit, you know, all the changes there, going from smudge pots to fans, you know, picking out my clothes based on whether there was a black layer on the, you know, the horizon or, or not. And thank God, we got through the last couple of weeks of you know, snow and frost. But I am not a lifetime politician. I am not being coached up by people. I am just here on my heart's desire to continue to serve. I have been a pharmacist, like I said, for over twenty-five years here in the gorge. I enjoy being able to help people on a personal level. I have experience also in the construction industry, in the small business zone, and also big business. I know about customer service and that's what I feel it really is as being the representative to. to sit on the commission board, representing the people of the district that goes from the river up to Portland Drive and out to the, to the west side, you know, the West Hills essentially is what I'm covering. So I want to be accessible to people. I am happy to listen. That's what a pharmacist does. It's kind of the joke, like what happens in the pharmacy stays in the pharmacy. It's like Vegas, you tell me something, I will take it in confidence. And if you want me to push it forward, I will find the right avenue and words to use to represent the constituents that are in my district. And I hope that everyone here gets a better perspective of who I am and I hope that you all vote for me. And God bless you all. Have a good night.
Thank you, Kathleen. Jennifer?
Yeah, well, first of all, even though I'm not a member of Thrive and am in no affiliate, no way affiliated with your group, I do really appreciate that you put this on. I think it's a great public service to get us all out here where people can hear what we have to say. I chose to run because I was encouraged by people from both sides of the spectrum. And when two people who I greatly respect, one of whom voted probably one way in the presidential election and the other one who probably voted the other way in the presidential election, both told me that I should run for this position and that they trusted me to listen to them. I decided to do it because that's what I care about. This is a nonpartisan position. I'm troubled by the divisiveness that we see around us. I would like to work in the other direction. And I, I'm truly willing to listen. I believe people on both sides, we have more in common than divides us. And we have a lot of contentious things to discuss. We have a lot of tough things to get through. We, and, and at the end of the day, this is mostly a job of keeping the lights on. Mostly, we have to continue to provide the services that we currently provide to the county and we have to figure out how to do that in a fiscally responsible manner. I loved Letty's ideas about how to be more efficient in the administration by, I, I hadn't, I guess I'm a different generation. I hadn't thought as much about how, how much we could streamline ourselves with more clicks, as she said. I do need, I do bring a new perspective. The county commission has been made up of the same people for quite a while. There hasn't been a lot of change. But I think it will be, we now have three new positions. And while change can be challenging and uncomfortable for some people, I know I've never grown without experiencing some amount of discomfort. So let's see. I, I've been told that I'm supposed to use more soundbites because I tend to get into the details of everything. And I will say that this is one thing that encapsulates what I have to tell you. I will work to keep what is best about our county and preserve our shared community values and beautiful productive resource land while accommodating the inevitable growth and change in our present and future. That really encapsulates how I feel about this, this job. I do have to say that several of my supporters have told me that they've been approached by someone telling them negative stories about me. And so I just want to let all my supporters know that there's, it's not true because they've all told me what the story is. So if anybody has any questions about my positions or my history or, or, or anything, please contact me. There is a place on my website and you can send me a question if you have any questions about my policies or anything else. And I guess the final thing I'll say is, as I was growing up, oh, and I apologize for that distracting us from the things that really do, we really do need to worry about in our county. I often heard the phrase that the only easy job is the one that you don't know anything about. My dad was fond of telling me that. And I found that to be so true. And so I'm sure that like any job, I've looked into what this job will entail. It will be a lot of work and I look forward to that. And I approach it with humility and enthusiasm for a new challenge with appreciation for the people who have come before me and the experience of leading by listening and including and passion for my community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Letty, close it up. I can smell dinner in my house, but I'm not going to be cutting you off.
Great. Well, again, I just want to thank you all. I am so grateful for experiencing both worlds here in Hood River County. I do love that about our community. I feel like that is what makes us special. And while navigating our systems, I've also seen many opportunities for us to be more inclusive in the way that we offer our services and allowing everyone to participate on local issues. I've said this before, one-third of our community has a similar experience to mine and we haven't been represented in county leadership. And I am grateful for this opportunity to run. I've had so many family members and friends and even my dentist and my chiropractor today who are asking me like, what does the county do? What do county commissioners do? And other people saying, hey, I saw you're running for something, you know, what, what is it that you're running for? And so I realized that this is an opportunity for me to connect in other ways with people and help them understand how the county serves us. And if we have better representation of our community when making those decisions, I feel like we're better informed to solve those local issues like housing, transportation, childcare. So again, I'm here to continue paying it forward. I've served on multiple different boards and I feel like this is the opportunity to be able to combine all of those. And I'm a connector and trying to make sure that we're maximizing our resources because we love our community. Our kids live here, they're going to school here, our family members live here. And we want the best for everyone. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone. I want to applaud you three for being prepared, for staying positive and for giving us some very substantive answers. I appreciate you being here. To everyone who was here, if you stumbled upon this forum because someone forwarded you our newsletter or something like that, feel free to sign up for our newsletter and we'll do our best to keep you in touch of civic happenings like this. And I'm sure we'll have more venues for you to learn more about what is going on in the county and the city of Hood River. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For being here.
All right, thank you.
Take care. Bye-bye.
Okay.